Okay, we're gonna call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro-Tim Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all are present.
Thank you, madam. Now, we're gonna have our word of inspiration from Pastor Mitch Masiel from the Restoration Life Church Christian Church, and we're gonna ask Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez to lead us in the pleas of allegiance.
Which is first?
We have pleas of allegiance first.
Okay. Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening, everybody, and greetings to all of our friends and neighbors from Restoration Life Church here in our dearly beloved city of Longdale. Let's go ahead and go before the Lord this morning, this evening. Father, we just thank you for our fair city of Longdale, that you've prospered it for all these years and under the wise leadership present here tonight and all the years past. I just pray to you to continue to endow our leaders with wisdom and discernment in leading our city, and pray a hedge of protection and safety over all those who serve to keep our city safe and beautiful. And we thank you tonight for all of your abundant blessings here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right. So, the next item on our agenda is gonna be a presentation. A presentation of our outgoing retiring city manager, Stephen N. Mandoki, city manager. He's joining us in the audience. Where did Steve go? There he is. He's trying to hide in the back, but as soon as I put my glasses on, I can see him. See, I see him there. So, what we're gonna do, we're gonna, I'm gonna read a little bit of something, then we're gonna present here with a couple of gifts to show our appreciation for Steve Mandoki for being such a wonderful mayor, such a wonderful city manager. Don't come at me. Such a wonderful city manager. No, it's not Kevin. It's Steve Mandoki. Okay, Steve Mandoki has served the city of Longdale in the position of city manager since he arrived in April 2011. During his eight years in Longdale, he has carried out the policies of the city council and was responsible for overseeing the city's department heads. On behalf of the Longdale City Council, we would like to say thank you to you for your dedication, your tireless work to this community and all that you have done. We congratulate you on your retirement and wish you all the best in your new chapter in your life. Thank you once again for your outstanding service to the community of Longdale affectionately known as the heart of the South Bay. And that's for the entire council, so that's the official one. We got a couple of these I'm supposed to read. So, that's that one. We got a couple of parting gifts. We love parting gifts. But this is a special parting gift. First, we're gonna present Stephen Mandoki, and we'll come down, we'll take some photos, and then we'll take a little break so everybody can say hello to him and wish him farewell in his new chapter in his life and retirement. Presented to Stephen N. Mandoki, city manager of the city of Longdale, and he has the date April 25, 2011 to July 5. Okay, that's what it says, July 5, 2019. "On the occasion of your retirement, with heartfelt thanks and gratitudes for your daily leadership service and dedication to the Longdale community for over eight years, we wish you all the best in your retirement," and it's signed by the entire city council. It's not really signed, but you get the point. And I'm gonna wait till we get down here to do the special presentation. So, I'm gonna ask the council to join me, and then we'll do a couple of special presentations, then we'll come back, and then if the council have any remarks, they can issue some remarks. Okay. Okay, Mr. City Manager, this is presented actually on behalf of all the good folks of Public Works. They'd like to present you with your own sign and your memory. I thought I said your memory up. I said, "Pay for the memories." This is really nice.
It's really beautiful.
Mandoki Lane. Give it up for Mandoki Lane.
I'm following around, Steve.
There we go.
Okay.
Don't think about it. I got your wallet, don't worry about it.
Take a few mics. We'll keep the best one.
One more.
This is. This is my best smile.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, also, we have eight years of service.
Thank you.
That we'd like to put on you and put on you right now.
We found that in the drawer. It was extra, so.
Okay, don't draw blood, okay?
Okay.
Eight years, and there's a diamond in there. If I do it like that, it'll blind you.
Who cares?
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
That's official, too. That's nice.
Now...
Very nice.
So that you can keep track of time and remember all the times, the good times that we had here in the city of Longdale as our fabulous city manager.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll present you with this.
Is it her gold watch, please? Thank you. Do the budget, come on.
It's white gold.
It's beautiful.
It's white gold. You asked too many questions. That's too many details. But we'd like to present this to you as well, so you can remember that, the great times we shared here in the city of Longdale.
Well, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
This is really, really nice. I truly, I didn't know what to expect tonight. I was just told by Ms. Felton that I had to be here.
So, let's take a picture with all of you here, good.
Okay.
Don't forget your sign. Put your sign up.
I can't hold anything.
No, you can hold those.
What can't be signed?
A number thing.
This is too much. This is really, really special. How's that? How's that, Mike?
Looks great. On three. One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three.
Give us a minute, we'll come up to you, and we'll have a couple of words.
Okay.
Words of wisdom.
I might have to say a few words.
Good job.
Thank you, Robert.
You wanna say anything?
What? Should I stand here?
No, no, I want the council to say something.
Haven't had to stand here for a staff report in many years.
Well, Steve, we're gonna hand the floor over to you. We're gonna miss you dearly. Keep in touch, you know where we're at.
Thank you.
You on the line?
Yeah.
Invite me to your wedding. I know it's coming down the road.
You've been telling me. That's right.
We've been telling you.
I know you have.
Congratulations.
Thank you, pal.
Join the retirement party.
Ms. Suarez?
Jim and I, and you.
And I just wanna say, wish you the best of luck. You're the only city manager I've known so far, so you set a very high standard, so Kevin, take note. And I just wanna say congratulations, and where did you graduate from high school?
Losinger.
I'm sorry.
I'll pass it along.
I'm really sorry. Write it. I'm sorry. I was gonna allude to that, too. Now, the number up here on the dais has diminished. Pat's gaining ground. You know, back in the old days, we had, yeah, there's another one.
We had two others.
Yeah, we had Larry and Harold. We really had you outnumbered for a while. But Steve, now, you came in at a time when the city really needed a calming influence, and that's always been appreciated by me and a lot of others. So, you know, best of luck in the future. Still a young person, so I'm sure you're gonna have a good road ahead.
Thank you, Jim.
Absolutely. And Steve, I wanna wish you much success in your retirement. Have a lot of fun, relax. You have done your work, and you're going to enter into your rest, and you did a great job. I mean, you talk about being a public steward of the public trust. You have truly been a steward of the people's business, and we wanna thank you for all that you have done for the city of Longdale. In the eight years that you've been here, you provided not only leadership, but direction and mentorship for our staff. A level head is hard to find for city managers because you come from day to day, you don't know what's gonna happen, but you provided that stability and that level headness that all can appreciate as a staffer and as a council member and as a mayor. I really appreciate all of your support and your leadership in leading this organization. So, we wanna thank you for being our city manager, and I know you don't have a Facebook page, but we'll assume that your daughter may post something on Facebook here and there, and we'll be looking for those photos. But congratulations, and thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you very much, Robert. Really appreciate it from all of you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's been a wonderful eight-plus years with the city of Longdale. I grew up in Hawthorne, went to school at Losinger.
Okay, that wasn't on your resume.
I did work it into the interview.
Okay, just kidding.
I did work it into the interview. But, yeah, my dad worked down the street when it was the Lucky's Market. Actually, Pat worked with my dad for a very brief, I guess, in your early, early days, Pat, right?
Yeah, that's why I locked you in the freezer when you used to come with your dad.
And I, the library of choice was the Longdale Library. That's where I went all the time for books. And my very first city council meeting in my government class at Losinger, I came to Longdale. And I always remembered the round council chamber. I think I was 16-years-old at the time, so... And then years later, I got the first job in Carson, and I've never looked back. I truly have loved my career in the public service. I've always felt like I've done good for the communities, and like I tell staff, you know, when you're making decisions, think about what's best for the community, and you'll make the right choice every time. It was a tough decision to retire, and, Robert, you and I had a conversation a long time ago about it possibly happening, and the day came. But I do feel good about a lot of things that happened here. One, I mean, working with all of you. I've worked for 33 years for different cities, not that many. Some people jump around a lot, but I've been in basically four primary cities in my career. And we're one of the finest councils I've ever worked with, and that includes starting with Mayor Hoffman and Councilmember Rudolph, the council members that hired me. I was very pleased to come work for you and to do what we've done over these last few years. Really pleased that all of you always had the public's interests at heart, always. You always put the community first, and that's a real pleasure to have in a city council member. I feel good, too, that you have a great management team, as I'm leaving. You know, in the last couple of years, we brought on some outstanding department heads, and I would not trade any one of them. You know, Ray Lett, my assistant HR director, filling in as acting city manager, our new city clerk, assistant city clerk, Matthew, Michael in MSD, Sean, Marla, would not trade any of them. They're outstanding public servants. They know their fields very well, and as you've all seen in the last few months, last year, we've really been making a lot of progress in all the different departments, and the transparency's increasing. Not that it wasn't there, but we keep bringing more and more to you and the community, so I'm really happy about that, really happy. Very pleased that the process we went through, that took several weeks, months, has produced a new city manager that the council was unanimous on, and that's Kevin. He's in the audience tonight, and he'll be starting in, I think, eight days, I believe, so... It's all been very rewarding. I'm really happy that I ended my full-time career here in Longdale. It's like I came back home, and I know I'm leaving things out. I didn't write a speech. I was just gonna, I didn't know where it was gonna go this evening, but I thought I'd just talk from the heart, and I truly mean everything I've said. And Tiffany, city attorney, your help over the last eight years, too. I remember you sitting in on the first interviews. And I know I'm not mentioning everybody, I'm leaving names out, but that's not my intention. But again, just thank you all very much. I've truly enjoyed it, and I'll miss the morning visits, Pat. But, you know.
Yeah.
You can call me.
I know you live. I can drive to your house. Fuck your future wife.
But I'm really excited about the future. Pat keeps telling me about, you know, you all met Debbie earlier this year, and we have some trips already planned, and she's been a wonderful person that's come into my life, and so we have a lot of things to look forward to in the future, too. So, just very excited and looking forward to the future, and very pleased with my time here with all of you. Thank you. And Ms. Hoffman.
Okay.
I was zooming for you earlier. I can't zoom time out yet, I'm sorry. But, Robert, as First Lady of Mary, I'd like to take the privilege of saying a few words. Thank you for staying as an interim manager. I appreciate that. And I remember how excited Harold was when he read your resume, a local guy, from Losinger. Yes! And how thrilled and glad he was that you were chosen to be our city manager. And I'm glad you've been here for this many years, and happy retirement. Now, I retired from Little Company of Mary in 2011, and I'm busier than I've ever been. So, if you think you're gonna have an easy time...
I don't. I don't.
Thank you.
I don't. No, thank you, George.
One more hug, yeah.
No, I still remember the night Harold called me and said, "We want you to come work for Longdale." I remember exactly where I was in his phone call.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
And with that, we'll take about a 10-minute break to have some cake in the foyer.
Okay, thank you so much. You gotta cut the cake.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene the city council meeting. Thank you all for joining us. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our public safety report. Let's hear from Captain Allen.
Excuse me. On what? What about the items from the city clerk?
Are there any items from the city clerk? Just back up this evening. There's any items from the city clerk? Thank you for that. Yes, sir, amen.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I just have two items that I wanted to remind the citizens about. The first one, this Friday night, December 6, starting at 4 o'clock, is our annual Angel Tree lighting ceremony. You can come and take pictures with Santa, ride down the snow sled run, and much, much more. Also, the city of Longdale will be celebrating the 60th anniversary with a winter fun land on December 7 and the 8. That's Saturday and Sunday. You can come by and enjoy the ice skating rink, the train rides, and other activities. For more information, you can visit the city website, Facebook page, or contact Community Service Department. We look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Okay, thank you, madam. Now, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from Captain Allen.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from November 18 through December 1. On November 20, at 7:30 PM, Deputy Laminico observed a male walking on Hawthorne Boulevard approaching 149th Street. When the male saw the deputy, he began to run while reaching for his waistband. Deputy Laminico detained the male pending a possible weapons investigation. While searching the male, the suspect stated, "I didn't want to kill you, sir. That's why I ran." Deputy Laminico asked the suspect why he thought he would kill him. The suspect stated, "Because I had a gun." Deputy Laminico searched the area where he first observed the suspect run from. He later recovered a loaded firearm. A check of the suspect's criminal history revealed he was also a five-time convicted felon. Due to the above, the suspect was placed under arrest and transported to South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station and booked for possession of a loaded firearm not registered to self and felon in possession of a firearm. On November 22, about 6:00 PM, Deputy Tian responded to Guitar Center regarding a customer in possession of a stolen guitar. He contacted the manager, who pointed to a male standing inside the location. The manager added, "The guitar had been previously stolen from the original purchaser's home about a week prior." Deputy Tian detained the male pending receiving stolen property investigation. The suspect stated he had purchased the guitar from an unknown female and could not produce any paperwork. Due to the above and conflicting statements, the suspect was placed under arrest and transported to South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station and booked for receiving stolen property. On November 26 in the afternoon, Deputy Carmago was driving near 166th Street and Fremona Avenue. She recognized a male from previous contacts who was on probation with search conditions for driving a stolen vehicle. The male immediately began walking away from where he had been standing. Deputy Carmago also saw three motorcycles parked along the location. She detained the male pending a probation compliance check. She also inquired who owned the motorcycles. The male replied, "They belonged to him." Deputy Carmago later determined one motorcycle was stolen. The male then insisted the stolen motorcycle actually belonged to his neighbor. At this point, the neighbor in question arrived. The neighbor stated the motorcycle in question did belong to him. She then detained the neighbor pending a stolen motorcycle investigation. The owner of the stolen vehicle was contacted and responded to their location. The owner added he didn't know either male the deputy was detaining. Due to the fact the neighbor didn't possess any papers regarding ownership of the motorcycle, coupled with the motorcycle's owner's statements, the male was placed under arrest and transported to South Los Angeles Station and booked for receiving property. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, are there any questions at the captain's report?
No questions, just a statement. Neighbors have been noticed in the patrols. Thank you very much. Keep it up.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Anything else?
Captain, when, we've heard these reports many times, when they recover a firearm, what would you say, and how many of the cases do they determine where that suspect was able to obtain the firearm? Did they ever find out any of them, or very few?
I mean, it depends on how recent that firearm was actually stolen. Obviously, say if it's stolen within a week, within a week or two, then more likely it was stolen immediately at that time. However, if a lot of times weapons have been stolen six months, eight months prior, then a lot of times it's passed probably a lot of hands, so you're not necessarily arresting the person that did that original theft to begin with.
I see. Great. Okay, thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
And also, thank you for that. I also noticed the patrol as well, particularly in the daytime, and we appreciate the patrols in the neighborhoods during the daytime. A lot of times, law enforcement sometimes will do the perimeters of what have you, the business communities and what have you, and sometimes the residents may not feel like someone is actually watching over their homes because they're not actually coming into the actual streets themselves. So, to see the deputies actually cruise the streets, you know, during the daytime while we're at work, that's really appreciated, and I just wanted to pass that off.
Yeah, we're doing that, and also just a reminder, you know, it is December, it's Christmas time, the holiday season, so, you know, just be more mindful of not leaving gifts in your cars after you've done some shopping, leaving doors open, so people just kind of freely come in and get your gifts and things of that nature. So, this is more the time where people do look for easy things to steal, so just kind of be mindful of that, just for minor citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Okay, now, we are at oral communications, public comments. This is where you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask you to line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just come to the podium. If you would start with your name first. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, again. My name is Bridget Miller. I'd like to also thank the council and the mayor for the voting of the urgency bill. But I'm here today, this evening, as a concerned citizen of Longdale. We have two issues where on Avis and 145th, there is where I feel that there should be a three-way stop sign there, because if you're coming out of 145th, you can't see the oncoming cars from going north and south on Avis. So, you kind of have to, like, ease out, and sometime those cars don't stop, could be an accident. Then we have another issue where on 145th, and I'm not for sure if that's the city of Longdale or the city of Hawthorne, there is a crosswalk there. No one stops for anybody that's in that crosswalk. I've seen mothers with their babies in strollers out there in the middle of the street while cars are going east, I mean, north and south on Prairie Avenue and will not stop. Kids also cross there from Losinger High School, and I know many years ago, even though the girl ran out in the street, was killed there. So, it is a very dangerous crossing, and also, again, it is a very dangerous section right there at 145th and Avis. So, if someone can do a study and see where there are cars that are going north and south on Prairie and not stopping for the pedestrians, and also a study at 145th and Avis as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Romero, and I'm the librarian at the Longdale Library. And I just wanted to highlight a few of the programming, programs that we have coming up in the next couple of weeks. On December 13, for the teens, we're gonna have the Hour of Code. Our teen librarian is going to be hosting Hour of Code, which is a global event that's gonna be held around the world, and teens will be learning how to code with Minecraft, and that is at 3:30. Next, we will be having, for adults, we'll be having seasonal wreaths for adults, so adults will be learning how to make wreaths to hang on their doors, and that's Saturday, December 14, at 2:30. And then, we also know, we're very aware that finals week is coming up for the high schools. So, December 17, 18, and 19, we're gonna be holding high school finals week quiet study hours in our meeting room, and so teens will be able to come and use our meeting room to study, and we will be having therapy dogs at each session, so for when the teens are stressed out, because they do get stressed out, they can play with the dogs for a little while. So, that's some of the things that we'll be having. Oh, and then we'll be having a little closer, December 7, our teen mini book sale. So, what we do there is, you know, we sell some used books that are all donated to the library, and all the proceeds go to our teen advisory boards, which they put back into the library. But that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Pullen Miles and council members. My name is Carrie Holland, and I'm here with my husband, Jim. We are both your one legacy ambassadors. Our mission is to save and heal lives by sharing the gift of life and delivering the message of organ, eye, and tissue donation. We came tonight to follow up with an email we sent a couple of weeks ago about participating in the First Look event on Wednesday, December 11. in the First Look event on Wednesday, December 11th of this year. This event gives you the opportunity to see the Donate Life float up close. This year's overall theme for the Rose Parade is the power of hope. Hope is more than sympathy, the possibility of fulfillment. Hope is dignity and respect, joy and happiness, aspiration and achievement. Hope never, ever quits. Through hope, we can aspire to be our best and in turn inspire those around us to reach higher. The Donate Life float theme is the light in the darkness. The float highlights the power of unity, light, and love as celebrated during the Southeast Asia's Festivals of Light, a celebration of light shining in the darkness. The many lives touched by donation embody the hope inherent in this festival. Twenty-six living donors or transplant recipients ride or walk beside the float. There will be 44 memorial floral portraits honoring the gift of life and light given by organ and eye tissue donors. The front of the float features colorful rangola, intricate circular designs made of rice and flowers created to adorn the entrance of a home. These rangola will house thousands of individually dedicated roses to honor those who have saved lives and healed lives through the power of organ, eye, and tissue donation. Two brass oil lamps feature traditional peacock designs and are accompanied by three majestic peacocks, symbols of new life. My connection to donate life is from the receiving and giving aspect of donation. It's amazing how one phone call can change your life in a direction you never imagined. In 2009, when I was out of town taking care of my father, I received a phone call from Jim telling me he needed a liver transplant. Jim did receive his liver from a stranger in 2011. In 2016, I received a phone call from my sister telling me my baby brother Marty did not wake up that morning. Marty became a hero because he was able to save two strangers' lives when he donated his kidneys. We are thankful to Jim's donor and happy that my brother was able to give a second chance of life to his recipients. You just never know when and if you will be touched by organ, eye, and tissue donation. The program begins at 10:00 AM, but we encourage you to arrive early to enjoy the breakfast being served starting at 9:00 AM. You will also get an opportunity to visit with other council members from other cities located in Southern California. You can have up to four participants, and we hope that you will be able to join us on December 11th to represent the City of Longdale. You can RSVP to us tonight or respond to the email I sent you previously. The deadline to respond is on December 4th, which is Wednesday. Thank you for your time. And we have some gifts and a flyer for the...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's have our next speaker. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Lopez. Hello, Mayor and everybody on the City Council. It's been a while since I've been here, so I always come with a sort of a small problem, but you guys always fix it. So I have another request. If we could possibly enhance the signage on 145th and Condon where it is a one-way street, north, south, no, north to south. There is a, two signs on 145th and Condon. They're both eight foot in the air. Most people's attentions are eye level. I see at least minimum of four cars a day, not every day, but four cars on a generality going the wrong way. I've been threatened with bodily violence when I tell them they're going the wrong way on two separate occasions this year. And I brought this up to the, to the city yard, and the lady said, "Well, that's a police issue." Well, yeah, by the time the police get there, I could be dead, you know, so that's here nor there, but people nowadays don't respect, have very little respect for a lot of things. If we could try to enhance it by putting it eye level, big signs like you have on the freeway, you're going the wrong way, arrows on the ground, anything to enhance the idea that it is a one-way street from Rosecrans all the way to 145th would be very, very helpful. Would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm London, 171st. I turned onto Inglewood from Marine today and headed south. There was a time when it's right turn only onto the freeway. Now, I don't know whose bright idea it was, but there's white lines as though you can continue to go straight when you're in the first lane heading south on Inglewood instead of right turn only onto the freeway. There's been many accidents, T-bones and so forth, because somebody come off the freeway and they can turn right on red, and everybody, well, most people know that there's no lane there for those other people to turn, to be coming from, so they turn after their stop, and then lo and behold, now these white lines are directing those people that they can continue straight instead of having to just turn onto the freeway. Although the asphalt is clearly marked as you come from under the freeway, there's only and the right hand turn on the asphalt, but then when you get up to the light, there's these nice new white lines that indicate it's a lane for you to continue straight. So I don't know whose bright idea it was, I don't know whose, you know, but somebody needs to be called and told that on that side of the road, they're going to hurt the residents in Longdale and the other residents from whatever city that may also be traveling in that, that direction. So that's one.
Before you go on, give me that, the coordinates again, off the freeway, Inglewood Avenue and...
Inglewood Avenue, going south.
South.
Before Manhattan Beach Boulevard where you would normally turn to go onto the freeway, now apparently you can go straight.
You go straight across and you have a fourth lane over the third lane, one, two, three, fourth lane, right?
Right, but, but it was not, you weren't allowed to go straight for all these years until apparently somebody's little creative whatever now.
Okay.
So something has to be done in order to stop the right-hand turners from the freeway or go back to right turn only from that lane. Also, y'all know that I have an issue with parking in the front yard. I just think it's so lovely, not. So there is a particular property in this city. There's boats in the front yard, there's cars in the front yard, sometimes it's all trashy up too in the front yard, and you know, you just, you drive by and it's like, really? We need to go to some kind of code case to whatever, to where there is a financial penalty to go with.
Yeah, give her 30 more seconds. All right, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Johnny London, Longdale. Just a couple of things. One, last meeting I was here, and I forgot to say, thank you guys for our waste management services that we went with, Republic. They were swinging by again today, and those guys, whether it be recyclables, trash, or yard waste, they go above and beyond what they're supposed to do. So I'm glad that you renewed the contract with them because they are all good people. And then I was also wondering, maybe at the next or down the line, could you give us a kind of an update on how the city's doing with the Airbnbs? What our progress is with them? Are they still operating as freely as we thought? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's bring up to discuss any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Reed.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for everyone that spoke tonight. For Ms. Miller's issue on 145th and the three-way stop, that's something I think we need to return to the Traffic Committee, so would you take care of getting that over to them, please?
Definitely. I'll have the Public Works Department take a look at the area and do a survey.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, oh, where'd the captain go? He might be talking to her offsite. I'll have a note out to the captain to actually check, and it's time for do another one of those crosswalk stings. I know we did one just a few months ago that was successful. And I am gonna pass it on.
All right. Councilman Pat Kearney.
Okay, also I want to thank you, everyone that spoke tonight. Ms. Librarian, thanks for the great update for December. Mr. Lopez, what school did you go to? High school?
The New One.
Longdale?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make, get that point across to my losing opponents here.
When there was only 1,200 people in the whole school.
That's right. My opponent's here. And then, I don't know about the off-ramp of 405 going south on Inglewood, I don't know if that's Redondo Beach or Longdale.
That's Redondo.
Yeah, I think that, that going south on Inglewood Avenue, I believe that does belong to Redondo Beach, but I'll double check.
No, it's definitely Redondo Beach, but you can, you can double check, and we can pass the information along to Redondo Beach.
Absolutely.
And then Johnny, I'll have our municipal service talk about, no, I'll have our planning director talk about Airbnbs if he can.
As of right now, Airbnbs are banned for less than 30 days. Short-term rentals are banned in the city. We work closely with MSD Code Enforcement. I know they do periodically updates, reviewing if we get complaints, or they're also being proactive, but we do get a lot of inquiries at the counter, and we tell them that it's not allowed in the City of Longdale.
And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Tom.
Did Michael want to say anything to, I'm sorry, I think we cut him off.
No, no, that's fine. I was just going to add that we do have a dozen active cases on Airbnbs. We did. Not working? How about that? There you go. We do have about a dozen active cases. We have a microphone. We're not in trouble with that microphone.
That's a fun side of the table.
It almost worked better when I wasn't pushing the button. Yeah, we have about a dozen active cases on Airbnbs. What we did was we went to the websites. They don't give you the information. They're being very cognizant of the fact that cities are not allowing them, so they don't give you the information until you book a room. So we got a dummy credit card for $100 using petty cash, and we booked rooms, and then we get all the information, and we get the phone numbers, we have pictures of the Airbnb, we get the contact information for the homeowner, and we open cases with, using basically the information they provided to their customers. So we open cases on all of them, and then we cancel the room. Obviously, we don't, we don't stay there.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, yeah, we, so we get the $100 back. By doing that, we get all the information. So we're trying not to be too vocal about it, but we haven't seen anything else lately, and I can give a hard number at the next council meeting if the council would prefer that.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you for that update. So I just want to, again, also thank everybody that came out to speak tonight. We had a healthy group of conversations right now, so I, I, I think that we'd had, someone had brought up to us 145th crosswalk and the light, so, but I'll wait for staff to update us on that with regards to the safety issue of people getting run over. Thank you to the librarian. I really am interested in the therapy dogs. It's a very, very good idea. And also I want to say thank you to Carrie and Jim Holland for the, Our One Legacy ambassadors. I know you come year after year, and unfortunately this year I can't make it, but I definitely urge the rest of my colleagues to try and make it out there. It's, it's a beautiful thing, and one of my favorite parts about the presentation is when the individuals who have donated or somehow or some way have been impacted, come and tell their stories, some even little kids and adults, and it's, it's beautiful. So I definitely urge the rest of my colleagues to make it if they can. And then, let me see, we haven't discussed enhancing the signage on 145th and Condon, so can we look at all the possibilities so that we can make sure that people are actually regarding those signs and...
Absolutely. I'll also ask Public Works to go out and look at the current signage and see if there's any enhancements that we can make.
Well, like Mr. Lopez said, the height is outrageous, like 10 feet tall.
Most people, they're, they look straight at it when they drive. They don't look to the right or to the left.
Sir, sorry about that. We can't have any conversation from the, from the audience. Thank you. And that was one of my questions too, because there's another sign, I think it's off of Condon near the railroad tracks. Tall sign. They just popped up maybe six months ago or whatever. Is it Condon? I believe it's Condon. I pass it about every day, and every day I pass by it, I say, "I'm gonna ask somebody about that." Why, why is it up so high?
Yeah, it's Condon.
So the next time I'll make sure I write it, write, write it down. It's not this location, it's another location.
Where is it? Condon and...
Let me pass by it again, because I don't think it's Condon. It might be Condon in, between 162nd and 170, but don't quote me on it. But I pass by it again, I'm gonna write it down.
Just a quick note, I do remember they were raised because of a lot of graffiti tagging. I see we need to lower them back down and order some more of those graffiti wipes.
Yeah, but people still need to see them when they drive, because you can't miss them. Okay, sorry.
Okay, well, thank you to the rest of my colleagues for jumping in, but I'll pass it along.
Just trying to help you out.
Just going down the line, and Bridget was talking about 145th. She is right, there is no stop there, and I've often wondered that because losing her kids are getting out there and they're walking across, so that's something. But half that crosswalk on Prairie should be in Hawthorne, so whatever they could do to enhance that. I know they've been putting in flashing lights in other locations, like Manhattan Beach Boulevard has it, Marine has it, so, but that also alludes to something. Some of these things brought up today are issues for Public Works, and I think in the future, just like in the past, we should have somebody from Public Works here on hand at the meetings to be able to address or answer some questions that come up from council. We used, used to do that, but lately, I know we have an interim director, so I understand that, but I still think we should have somebody at the meetings. Thank the librarian for the update again, and Jim and Carrie, I'll try to make it. I've made it every year. That is a wonderful event, wonderful organization, and when you watch the Rose Parade on New Year's Day, you always look for that float and the stories behind what the people went through, the donors or the recipients. It's very moving. And in fact, I just renewed my license, and now they put the donor thing, if you check that box, as you hopefully do, it's embossed in your license. In the old days, you had to peel it and stick it on there, and sometimes it would come off, but now it's permanently in there. But I'll definitely try to make it. And Eddie, another issue might be, lower the signs too, too low, you may, you know, block pedestrians. If it's wider than the parkway, people walking down the sidewalk can hit their heads, or cars trying to park by a location. But staff got the word, so I'm sure they'll look at it.
Thank you.
And, and Dan already talked about the graffiti issue. And the Marine southbound, I do believe that west side is Redondo, but again, staff will look at that, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you for that. And I also want to thank the librarian for giving us information on the coding program as well as the study hours for our teenagers, students. And also thanking Carrie and Jim, once again, for, for coming today to let us know about Donate for Life and for being here for every year to invite us onto the program. You already pretty much answered my question about the, the height of the sign, so I'll skip, skip that one, and we'll take a look at, oh, Mr. London, thank you for your comments about Republic. I think we made a good choice for the, for the, for the public. They've done an excellent job for the City of Longdale, and we look forward to them to continue to provide excellent service for our residents. With that, we've already pretty much covered the rest of these items. Yes, so with that, we're closed public comments, and we'll move our agenda along. We are now at the consent calendar, which is item H on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Does anybody want to pull or discuss anything? And I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, without any objections, the motion's been made by Reed that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing now where the council please vote on the consent calendar.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item, item number seven, Award of Professional Auditing Service Contract. Let's have the report. Yes, ma'am.
The report before you is regarding our Award of Professional Auditing Services. We have been with our current external auditor for five years in their contract. They're just finishing up the fifth year, and with that, the contract has actually expired, and we are now going into a new RFP. The audit scope includes both our financial statements, it includes our single audit, which would be for our federal expenditures, if they exceed $750,000 expenditures in a year, that's the audit threshold.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right, thank, thank you. Next item, um, item number seven. Um, award of professional auditing service contract, let's have the report. Yes, ma'am.
The report before you is regarding our award of professional auditing services. We have been with our current external auditor for five years in their contract, they're just finishing up the fifth year. And with that, um, the contract is actually expired and we are now going into a new RFP. The audit scope includes both our financial statements, it includes our single audit, which would be for our federal expenditures if they exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars expenditures in a year, that's the audit threshold. And it also includes optional services for our, um, transit occupancy taxes, our hotel taxes. We went out for bid for a new proposal. We got four bids in, one which we felt wasn't responsive because of the experience of the, or lack of experience of those who submitted the proposal. The other three were very knowledgeable firms. We looked at the scope of work, the time period of the audit performance, experience and knowledge of the firm as well as, um, the cost of providing it. Based on the proposals that were submitted, we felt that one firm had, um, a lot of expertise above the others, basically because they were reviewers of the government accounting award standards. They basically go in and review all the government standards. They, most of their clients are government audits and we felt they could bring in expertise to the city of Longdale. We also felt with us going out for an award, that it would be good to rotate auditors. That being said, we are recommending that we approve a contract with the firm Rogers, Anderson, Melody and Scott. The rates for five years would be two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred, because it is a five-year contract. That is comparable to the other two firms that were competitive. Our current auditors Lance, Soul and Lundgard, their five-year cost would be two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. And then we had Wyatt Nelson, Delanette, um, Evans. Their five-year cost is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. So based on the review of the contracts, we are recommending that the council approve the contract that is before you for five years with Roger, Anderson, Melody and Scott. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report, are there any questions of the report? Okay, seeing now, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item number seven?
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve and just want to thank Marla for your explanation, thank you for mentioning rotating. It's very insightful.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Suarez and?
Robert, I do have one quick question. Have you done any, uh, work with any of the other South Bay cities to our knowledge?
Um, actually, they have and I don't have the list of, I do have it, but it'd take a little bit of digging. Um, I think, believe, City of Hawthorne is one of theirs. And I called them for basically a reference to see how they are with it. So they do have a couple in the area, um, the, the contacts that they gave me that I, um, called, very high references.
So you got positive feedback, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, all of it has been very positive.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Suarez and seconded by Osborne, is there any discussion on the motion?
We should actually have the motion redone, please, since there was the question.
Okay, let's, let's have, um, let's restate the motion, um. Councilwoman Suarez.
Make the motion that we approve staff's recommendation for contracting auditing services.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Suarez and seconded by Mr. Osborne. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing now with the council, please vote on item seven.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you, next item. Is an appointment to the Los Angeles County Vector, excuse me, Los Angeles County West Vector, um, in Vector Born Disease Control District Trustee Appointment. So our current member of the, the board is Mr. James Osborne and so that term is is ending and so we have opportunity to appoint,
And I'll do it again.
Another, um, the same or another council member, um, to serve on that board for a term of four years. It seems like we have one nominee, which is, uh, which is Mr. Ja, Mr. James. So at this point, um, the mayor were making an appointment, is there any, any discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay, seeing now the mayor would make the appointment of Mr. James Osborne to, I guess I should read the thing here, to the Vector Control Board. Yeah, adopting resolutions, uh, number CC nineteen twelve dash zero five eight. Effectively appointing, uh, James Osborne to the Vector Control Board. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any more rate?
All right, the council please vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you for reminding, so the motion's been made by Osborne and seconded by Mr. Daniel Reed. Any discussion on the motion? Council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, item number nine is rotation or selections, if you will, for, um, Mayor Pro Tim, which will start, um, January the sixth, or, yeah, in, in January, when we convene in January and we run through the, through the year. What is the pleasure of this?
My pleasure and honor to nominate Councilmember Suarez to the position of Mayor Pro Tim.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Osborne that we, um, appoint one of the Suarez as Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion?
You're not, I'm just curious, you're not planning on missing any meetings that she'd have to chair and that you're aware of, uh?
I never miss any meetings, by the way, this, this Barry White voice is because I'm a little ill.
I know you are.
In case you was wondering why I sound so sexy tonight.
Head cold syndrome.
I, I think we'll be okay. Only though if Pat brings that jacket in.
All right, very good, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion approved with Councilmember Suarez abstaining.
Very good.
You can.
It even says in the notes you can vote for yourself. Congratulations. Okay, next item on our agenda is the city manager's report, let's, let's hear from our outgoing, outgoing acting city manager.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I actually did a survey of staff, um, to determine whether or not there were any pending items for the December sixteenth meeting. Um, there are no pressing items, so at this time we recommend you are requesting, um, that you have a discussion about potentially cancelling the December sixteenth meeting. It, it really is up to you, how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, I'm, you got something you want to say?
No, I'm all for it.
Okay, I was gonna say with that, I'll, I propose that we cancel the, um, December sixteen, uh, meeting. Is there?
I'll make the motion.
How we feel about that?
Get over your cold, that one.
All right. So we can do that just by anonymous consent, right?
I think that's what we're telling them.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so with that, we will cancel the, um, December sixteenth council meeting. Okay, that brings us up to item eleven. Um, reports from the mayor and council members, any meetings you'd like to report, anything you attended. Let's start with Councilmember Reed.
Well, I was sitting here thinking I have something to report, but I missed that report on the last meeting since I wasn't here. I had gone to the, uh, school district meeting. It's already been reported the last time with my colleague. Um, no other meetings and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Very good, thank you. Captain, Pat Kearney. No, we didn't notice you were tired.
I believe Councilman Osborne, uh, Os, Mayor Pro Tim Osborne and I attended the twelfth annual volunteer reception for the Cog. Mayor and I attended Autumn Burke's Turkey Giveaway and I was a transporter of turkeys. And I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. And we'll see you Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Thursday is this side, Friday, Saturday and Sundays for the.
Okay, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I attended the Centinela Youth Services Board of Directors meeting last Thursday. Um, just some housework that we were taking care of. And I also attended, um, I was a little late, but the, uh, South Bay City Council of Government meeting last Thursday as well. And I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and looking forward to twenty twenty.
All right. Yes, sir.
And musical chairs next night. Pat already mentioned it, the, uh, South Bay Cogs, uh, volunteer reception. It's always good because, uh, always in years past, it was always a Longdale resident that had the most hours of service, so it's a good thing to go to. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, as you both said.
Very good, thank you. And I also attended the, um, Centinela Youth Services, uh, meeting where we're making very nice progress, um, with that board. And I want to thank Councilman Pat Kearney for transporting and delivering turkeys, um, to the House of Yahweh. Um, for Longdale residents and those who, um, go to the House of Yahweh, um, for, um, for turkeys for, um, this Thanksgiving. We really appreciate that. And with that, I want to also wish everyone a, a Merry Christmas and Happy, um, Holidays and we'll see everyone back in the new year, the new year looks promising. It's twenty twenty, that means we have clear, uh, vision, we have clear sight. We know where we're going because we know where we have been. See?
Thank you very much.
Look forward for good things.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays. So with that, we will convene on January the sixth. I think I saw that, but let me see, what did I, we have a closed session? Okay, so I'll say that after we have closed session, then, I'll say that. So we do have one closed session where we're gonna, um, have a conference with our legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the, the provisions for which we will go under.
The city council will meet in closed session regarding anticipated litigation to consider whether to initiate litigation in one case against the Metropolitan Transportation Authority relating to the I-405 improvement project. Thank you.
Thank you.
The city council met in closed session on one item pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four. The council was updated, no reportable action, thank you.
Thank, thank you, fair. Councilman Osborne.
I just want to say one word of thanks to Raylette for filling in during this interim time and a lot of change and you picked up the ball and carried it well and you addressed the issues I'd bring to you, so I wanted to say thank you and, uh,
Absolutely.
That's about it.
Great job. Absolutely, yeah. And we have a plaque.
And a street sign.
Just kidding. Have a great job. Okay, so the next regular scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at six thirty PM. Yeah, January the sixth, two thousand twenty.
Happy New Year.
That sounds like a long time from now, twenty twenty. Um, in these chambers, it is now. Is that right? Which one is right, that one?
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five. And, I changed this, like, we're like, we've been here that long? I was like, we've been dilly-dagging around?